Tuesday, May 17th, this meeting of the Ontario Central School District Board of Education is called to order. We have a tobacco policy in place. There's no smoking within 100 feet of our buildings. Please rise for the pledge. Roll call, please.
Trustee Salem.
Present.
Trustee Sherry. Trustee Osmond. Trustee Story.
Here.
Trustee DeJesus. Trustee Bishop.
Here.
The Board of Education hereby approves the minutes of the May 3rd, 2022 Board of Ed meeting. May I have a first? Trustee Story, second, trustee Bishop. Are there any questions or comments? All those in favor? Aye, that's unanimous. John Reimer, our Director of Technology, will now present the Cybersecurity and Smart Schools Bond presentation.
Alrighty, sorry for the wait. A little technical difficulty. So, we're going to talk about cybersecurity and what the district has done, and how we prevented a couple little mishaps that could have potentially caused us some grief. So, as we go through, you'll see. So, what is cybersecurity? Cybersecurity is the process of putting applications in place to control access and prevent things that are coming into what we would say is our area. So, this is our network. What comes in there? Who has access to what files? What people, or email and things like that? What forms of cyber threats are out there? So, these are common ones. So, you're going to see, there's also... There's malware, which is very, very big. That's where you get your ransomware, and that's where they're placing stuff on your network systems, and they're controlling the backdoors to your systems. You also have backdoors, same sort of thing. The newest one that I've just actually noticed is form jacking, where they're putting macros inside of forms so that they can actually use the... When you're typing in information, they're picking that part and they're taking that back with them. So, they're basically data mining on that. You're also going to see a lot of email phishing. This is big in education right now. We see this on a daily basis. There's probably about 300 to 400 email phishing attacks a day, but most of our systems catch it and don't allow it to go through. This is an interesting slide. So, cyber attacks at a glance. Okay, read this from here, but... So, 40%... There was a 40% surge in global ransomware in 2020. So, we saw, it was huge because of the pandemic. So, as the pandemic went and everybody went remote, we saw that increase. We also saw that 60% of security, there was a 67% increase in security breaches. That's going to come to effect when I show you the next slide, because it's kind of interesting to see how people are, what they're attacking, and who are they looking for. Cybersecurity in education. This is the biggest target. And the reason why it's the biggest target is because by the time anybody notices that there's been some sort of security breach, it's when a student is possibly 18 years of age. So, think of your youngest student, six, maybe six, seven years old. They're going through their lives, and they don't see it until 18, because how do they notice? They actually get, they go to try to get a credit card, and they can't because someone already has used their information. So, their social security number, they found that out, and they found out where they live, things like that. So, between six and 18, they had no idea that there was actually someone using their credentials or information. And there's no way to really track that. So, that's why education's the biggest target. We gather that information, so we know people's date of birth, we know where they live, we also know family members and things like that. The only thing that we do not hold is the social security numbers. Good thing for us, because that's one of the top things on the black market right now, is try to get social security numbers, and you can get whatever you want. So, on this slide, it's pretty interesting to see that over the course of 2019, 2020, the education data breach cost was $4.7 million. So, that was, that's crazy. So, we looked at it from before pandemic, and we said, okay, we're not that lucrative. It's the healthcare industry and things like that. Now the pandemic hits, where's the easy target? Little kids are on Chromebooks, they're all over the place. Do they click those things? Probably. So, now, the market has changed, and we see that, hey, let's go to education. We can get that information very quickly. This was a slide that I wanted to show, but I'm not going to show it right now. It's actually a cybersecurity live threat analysis of where the actual targets are. And it's, if you actually watch it and look at it, you'll see that they're targeting from the United States. They're going down to Nepal, they're going to India, they're going places like that, or they're coming from Australia back to us. So, it's kind of interesting to see that trend and see the actual live analysis of what's going out there. A lot of crypto mining and a lot of Cobalt attacks. There's also some old Configur virus, things that are going on, but you'll see that in that live threat. So, cybersecurity, how do we protect? What we have done in the district itself is we put in a second firewall. So, originally, we had one firewall, and that was at Bosie's. They monitor that, and they give us reports, and they say, okay, well, this is going on. What do you want us to do about it? So, we decided, okay, let's put a second one in, and let's run other reports to make sure we have a checks and balance. They tell us one thing, we see another thing, let's make sure that they're both, they're actually, the aggregation is correct. We run those reports every day. I get, every morning, I get an email that says, this has gone on the night before. We also do event log monitoring. All our servers, we look for any unauthorized access, who's logging in, when they're logging in, what they've actually gone to, and what they are viewing. So, we see that on a daily basis. I've taken this a step further, and I've taken away most of my admin rights to anyone within the district. Even myself, as the Director of IT, I don't have an admin account. I go away with that, and I say, you know what, leave it there. If I need something, I'll get it a different way. We are, we are on board for next year of implementing an actual monitoring service through the Mid-Hudson Rick, which does, there's a security analyst, and they're looking at our network during the middle of the night, 24/7, 365, and they're seeing if there's any trends. If there's trends, they have access to turn that device off, or call someone and say, hey, this doesn't look good, please tell me what I should do before I turn off your whole network. And that's, that's one of those things that we might have to do, but I'd rather be cautious and know that before getting a call from the superintendent and saying, well, we've been breached, how do we fix this? We are also on all business official, or business office personnel, we are going to be putting in multi-factor authentication. This is one thing that our business office does not have with the system that they have right now, Envision. It's not there. They didn't have the capabilities of doing multi-factor authentication. They've actually started to increase it because of the attacks, and now they're going into, and we're going to implement that for September of next year. We've increased our protection on our gateways, email, inbounds endpoints, and things like that. So, we are prepared. We're proactive. I can't say we're prepared, we're 100% going to not have a cyber attack sooner or later. It's possible, but we have preventative measures in place. Are there any questions?
I have one or two, if nobody else does.
Sure.
No questions. I hope I didn't miss something while I was out there that I'm going to ask. So, I know you use the Cisco software. Do you also do some, do you personally sort of set our filters, our email filters and such?
Yes. So, we do email filtering through our Office 365. We set up what's coming in, what threat, basically, we get a baseline score, and then we set from there what we want blocked, and we whitelist or blacklist anything that we deem necessary.
Is that part of your daily sort of routine? So, you come in each morning, and you look at the previous night's report from Cisco, and then you set new filters?
Yes.
Great, thank you. My other question is, are the district data, confidential data, and, you know, our student data, employment data, is that all stored locally on our own servers? Are they physical servers here, or do we have backups of things that are in the cloud?
So, yes, that's a, we have remote backups that go out to Minnesota, because that's, we, we, or get that hosted through Infinite Campus. So, they are our backup center. We also have internal Infinite Campus boxes in the district. So, there's only one Infinite Campus box that holds all our SIS data, which is our student information system. And that's on a limited access. Nobody has, we don't normally go into that system. We only go in there unless, if there's some sort of issue, or we need to update something.
Great. So, what, in your opinion, what is our, is there any particular vulnerability that you would like to address that isn't being addressed now? Is it, is our greatest vulnerability, you know, at the point of sort of young students on Chromebooks, or is it, you know, in our...
The answer to the question is, the weakest link is a user. So, if they're willing to click on something and think that it's legit, that's your weakest link. So, you're prone to anything. So, I can send you an email, and it'll look like it's from me, but it could be Scotty in another country sending you that email. So, what we do is, we actually do some training, and we have a package from InfoSec, which is a company that does email filtering campaigns. They do phishing campaigns. We can do some other campaigns. We haven't really launched all of them. But we do those, and we actually look for who our biggest, basically, who our biggest people are to say, are you looking at the data that's there? Are you looking at the email and making sure it's legit? Are you looking at email addresses and saying, this is the person I'm talking to? So, you might get an email from the superintendent and says, hey, please change my W2 to this. If that happens, I would hope that someone would make that walk. It's literally down the, maybe a couple doors, make that walk down the couple doors, and say, did you request this? And I think that was brought up in one of an audit, an audit that was done, and I think that was rectified.
Great, thank you very much. Are there any other questions for Mr. Reimer?
Not a question. I just wanted to say that in, in the Audit Committee, John, thank you so much for presenting there and tonight. That was addressed, and there have been issues where an employee sent, you know, sent, an employee sent an email to payroll, and then the person, the person in the central office did not make the change but called to make sure, and the person had not sent the email. So, you know, we do have to be really careful, and I think now that whenever a change is made, it's made in person. All staff have to show up at Central to make that request.
Fantastic, thank you. And thank you, John, for that presentation. We appreciate it. No more questions? Alright. Ryan Nakarado, our...
Yes, I will do my second presentation.
But, I'm sorry. Oh, yes, the Smart Schools Bond, yes, excuse me.
Alright, so we'll give an update of the Smart Bond and things that have been done, and what we now have. So, going back on what Smart Schools was and what we could use it for. So, Smart Schools was, it was actually a bond that came out, and they gave every district some money to provide some more uses for surveillance, high-tech security, classroom technologies, some facilities, constructions, and things like that. That was one. And through a survey that we did, we did, we found out that the biggest thing that people, students, staff, and parents wanted was school security. So, we invested heavily into this, we put $428,000 into physical security of our buildings. So, many years ago, we had, this building was the only one that actually had cameras. And it was the only one that had real door access where somebody could swipe in, and they would be able to get in the building. Through this Smart Bond project, we actually replaced, in this building itself, 35 original cameras and added additional 30 of them. This now covers the internals and externals of this building by itself. We've also included card readers at doors where our staff were trying to get in, and they would have to use a key. They now have a key fob that they can swipe in. We've also increased and put lights outside of all external entrances, that it's a blue strobe. So, if you see it go off, you know, please do not come to the building. This is a lockdown, please stay away from the building. And that was a big concern, because how did you know when the school was in lockdown, if you were coming from the outside? It's one of those things, you walk to the door, and you say, well, nobody's answering the door, how do I, what do I do? And a teacher might decide that, hey, I have a key to get in, I'll just walk in the building. So, we fixed that with these blue lights outside the buildings. So, when they go off, that everybody knows, please do not come into the building. We've also allowed our administrators to see what doors are still open. So, if you, they get a map, they can see it, and they can see that it turns green, yellow, and red. So, green is good, yellow means the door's open, red means the door's been open, and it's left open. So, if you see a red door, we usually say, go to the door and make sure there's a reason for that door to be open. That's just this building. So, now, we're going to go and see what we did to the other buildings. So, we just didn't focus on this main campus, we went to all the buildings. So, in Bennett, we did the same sort of thing. We gave them blue lights outside, so there's lockdown. They can see that happening. Card readers had all their main entrances that they need. The building maps are still there, but we installed 30 new cameras. So, these building, this building did not have any cameras at all. So, now, they can see internals and externals of the building. So, we know what's going on, or if there, a case of event, we can have someone look at it. One other thing that we actually didn't include in this package was the remote lockdown. So, the system is good if somebody's sitting behind a desk and saying, okay, well, there's a lockdown. Let me click the button and say, lock down the building. Now, our administrators can walk around the building, and from their phone, they can initiate the lockdown. So, that gives them mobility around the buildings. So, I see something that I don't think is good, I'm not at my desk, I'm not going to call on the radio and say, hey, please initiate the lockdown. Okay, I have my phone, click, done. Blue lights turn on, doors lock. You are not coming into the building unless you're a first responder, some sort of emergency sort of thing, administrator, or someone that has those capabilities. Woodstock was the same sort of scenario. We increased all the, we did the same things, but we also added the 41 cameras in this building. So, a little bigger building needed a little more camera. And there was a couple dead spots that we had to actually add some additional cameras to capture those pieces. Phoenisha, 28 internal cameras, everything else was the same. So, now, our district is fully capable of doing lockdowns, swipes, knowing who's in our buildings, and being proactive of what's going on around. So, anything that happens, the administrator could look at it and go through that. And that is it. Are there any questions?
Trustee Bishop.
John, so with all those cameras in the buildings, is there a place in the building where someone could observe something that's going on inside the building at the time, like in the moment, or are those like recorded videos that are viewed at some later time?
So, by district policy and board policy, it states that there's no live feed being watched at any given time during the day. So, if an incident was to happen, the administrator would request it from the superintendent, which would make her designate to the administrator to look at the video and see what happened. So, there's no live feed. There's no, there's also, I want to be very clear, there's no audio being recorded, there is none.
Trustee Sherry.
Thanks, John, for that. I have a couple of questions. So, the door maps are monitored by administrators only. Is that correct?
Can you, can you just speak a little louder? Sorry.
The maps of the doors are monitored by administrators only, is that correct?
Yes.
How often, is that like a regular part of the day, that the doors are checked, or how often does that really happen?
Currently, currently, it's just sporadic when they think that there's something going on. Like, just say this building, we have hall monitors that go through the building all day long, so they're checking doors too. So, it's, they're going to catch something before an administrator would catch it, just because of the fact that they're there.
And does Officer Sharon have access to both the door maps and the remote lockdown ability?
So, that's, that's a good question, because it's not written into the contract with the Ulster County Sheriff's thing. And this was, so going back, I think it was three, four years ago, there was a scenario where we wanted to give access to those officials, state police, Ulster County Sheriff, and we brought them an actual contract from our attorney to say, please sign, and then we'll give you access rights to it. They never signed off on it.
Just so you know, at this time, when there's an incident, we actually have to go through the process of getting a court order approval, and then we hand the tapes over. So, it's, there's protocols all around that.
Yeah, I guess I was just curious if, in an emergency, Officer Sharon would have the ability to lock down the school?
So, technically, the answer is yes, he could. He could definitely have access to the system. And because, again, why are we going to fight that and say, hey, please do not look at our video? We want him to know what's going on, and we want those other officials to know what's going on in the building so that they can respond in a good way. They're not walking into something that's possibly a danger.
But again, an administrator is the one who's there with the officer.
Yeah, I guess I was just thinking about, you know, an instance where Officer Sharon might be away from an administrator and would need access and the ability to do that on his own. So, I'd be interested in finding out if that was something that we could provide him through contract or...
Yeah, I think that still would probably go through the superintendent. The superintendent would have to give, to say, okay, yes, you can, you can have access. Because that would be, again, that would probably be a remote connection in.
Sure.
So, we would have to make sure that it was a Shakira line.
And then my last question is, in an actual emergency, when the school is locked down, and the blue strobe lights are going, and there's no access to the building, how do first responders get into the building in that case?
So, in our system, as of today, there's actual, so, any first responder that has keys, they are on the list that their keys still will work. So, their keys override the lockdown. So, they swipe in, they go in, the door shuts, still building's still locked. They still have access into the building.
So, then presumably, the Town of Olive Police Department, the Fire Department, the State Troopers all have keys that will override the lockdown system?
Correct. And there's also knock boxes outside of each of the buildings so that they could actually get into the building.
Okay.
If the key, let's just say there was a power outage. The key fob system may turn off if it's an extended period of time. So, they would have, they actually have keys in these knock boxes that they can get in.
Terrific, thank you.
Trustee Story.
Do we have any signs up that says, when the blue lights are flashing, that not to come in, the school's in lockdown? Because I didn't know that until we were here, so, you know, how would other parents know?
We don't as of today, but that is in the works. That is one of the things that I know the Director of Facilities, Kyle, was working on, getting signs. Because we also have to include the signs at each building that now say, there's cameras in, that are, the cameras are recording. So, those are things. We didn't finish up the actual system until last week. So, we're still, there's a couple little things that we still need to get, but we're working on those.
And then, how long does the district keep the videos on? How long does, do we keep it for, like a week, month, or...
So, with our new system, it's been, it depends on the camera and what it's recording. So, I don't want to say exactly... So I don't want to say exactly how many days you're going to get, but you're going to get more than two weeks.
Thank you.
Trustee Osmond.
Hi, just to follow up on that, is the data backed up anywhere? The video data?
So the physical data is just on the server. It's not backed up anywhere.
Okay. And we think it just lasts for a couple of weeks?
From what I've seen so far, it's been in the vicinity of two weeks is my minimum. But some cameras go way over that.
Okay. John, why don't you also explain when we have an incident, what we do? Because you're the one who does it. We will download.
Yeah. So what happens is normally if there's an incident, it goes through. So the administrator is going to contact the superintendent. The superintendent's going to say, yes, you can, you can view that video or what do we want to do with it? The administrator's going to look at the video and say, okay, well, I need you to record from this time to this time on this day and what camera it was. So then they give that information to me. I look at the system and say, okay, well, you need this day to this day, only this time. And that's what we provide them. So we provide them a burnt copy of exactly what they're asking for. And it has all the timelines from what they're looking for. So it says on the tape itself, it'll say one o'clock to two o'clock, camera 35. And that's how they look at it.
Just as a theoretical, so say, say there's a report of whatever behavioral violation, let's say. And it comes, you know, within statute of limitations, right? A month late, six months late, four weeks late, five weeks late, whatever. Is there any recourse for the district to, you know, if someone says, well, this happened to me in this hallway or, you know, whatever? Is it just gone? Is there any recourse to retrieve this sort of thing? If it falls within a reasonable complainant period?
No, because the board policy states that we're only, that we do at a minimum of 14 days. So that's, it's board policy that states, hey, the minimum is 14 days. If we get longer, we get longer.
And that's determined by the capacity of the file size or the capacity of the storage?
It's, it's by capacity of the server. So every camera that connects into the server is going to take up so much space. Let's just say we have 35 cameras. We'll take the high schools. So that has 65 cameras. Depending on the camera and where it's located, so the external cameras, they're recording 24/7. So those, we know 24/7, they're probably going to get less days because they're recording all the time. There's, there's things that you can do to the video to say, okay, I want this to be low use or high quality, depending on what you want to do. So right now, we looked at it and said, okay, let's, let's just put everything at regular quality. Leave it there. Let's see what we get and then that'll be our benchmark. And then if we need to focus in on more and, okay, we need this area, we need to cover this all the time. Let's go to our high priority areas and say, we need to have those all the time. If there's nobody in a, let's just say internally, you're down a hallway. Do you want to record 24/7? No. I only want to record when there's going to be someone possibly through there. So during a day, yeah, I'm probably recording to a certain time. And then after that time, I'm just going to record on motion. So when motion happens, I want to know and it's going to turn the camera back. It basically turns the camera back on and starts recording again until the motion is gone.
Is there any possibility of cloud storage off the server?
There is, but the amount of traffic that would entail, so right now, we're using 65 terabytes of data to go out. That's our server. So 65 terabytes of data going over that, you're probably looking at a week's worth of just uploading it somewhere. So that's, and what are you gaining is really the, I guess that's the question is what you're going to gain out of it? If you're going to send it up and it's going to be a week old, that's only for one day. So if it's going a week, you're only going to get one more day.
Okay, thanks. I just wanted to understand the capabilities. Thanks.
Are there other questions for John? Okay. Thank you very much, John. We appreciate it. Now Ryan Nakarado, our Director of Athletics, PE and Health, will present an overview of our athletic program.
Okay, everybody. Good evening. My name is Ryan Nakarado. I'm the Director of Health, PE and Athletics. I'm super happy and excited to be here. So I prepared a presentation for you all to kind of give you some oversight and maybe direction of the current state of the athletics program and where our goals are, where we're headed, things like that. So let's go ahead and get started. So who we are on T O R Athletics. One, we want to provide students with an opportunity to participate in educational-based athletics. Education is first, right? The term student athlete, student comes first. Yes, we want our athletes to be successful on the field. We also want them to be just as and if not more successful in the classroom as well. So we can set them up for a lifetime of success. So that's a very important key factor that we really regard at a high level to make sure we do that. And also, so sports, we know that it attributes in a positive way to athletes, student athletes physically. But we believe that educational-based athletics play a huge role in not only physical health, but mental health as well as social health. It's been proven and shown that physical activity is a great outlet to really just kind of increase your overall self-esteem, confidence, give you a sense of belonging with your peers and your social health, especially coming out of the pandemic. I think it's great for young teenagers to be able to interact, learn how to solve problems, communicate, collaborate together to achieve a common goal, which is really to make progress in whatever, you know, sport and skills they're currently working on. And like I just hit on, athletics plays a huge role in not just trying to win games or maybe be a better softball player or basketball player or work on your tennis skills. But also these teach lifelong skills. I know it's proven through research that being a part of an athletic team can really help you in multiple different aspects in your life. Of course, in the academic setting, but also out there in the real world. When you go for that job interview, when you secure that job and as you progress up the rankster of that job, having these skills such as communication, problem solving, conflict resolution that you can learn through sport is a really, really key thing. So I do have a quote that I say, and it kind of goes hand in hand with being the best version of yourself. It's you versus you. You want to be the best version of you on a daily basis. You should not be comparing yourself to anybody else. You should be comparing yourself to who you were yesterday. And hopefully when you go to bed at night, you've got a little bit better than you were yesterday. And if everybody does that and takes that same approach, I think as a whole, we can really make progress and strides in the right direction. And of course, we want to enrich student athletes' lives through positive experiences. If students are not having a positive experience, if they're not having fun, if they're not having fun, what's the chance that they're going to carry over and try it for the next sports team season or the following year? We want them to have fun. We want to create a culture of care that is nurturing, that is positive, that is supportive, so we can help get them to where they want to be. It's a good thing I brought my printout because my eyes aren't too good. I can't see that far. So where are we going? That's where we are. So what direction do we want to be moving to right now? So we want to continue to provide opportunities that enrich and support the needs and goals of our students. This next key, lead by example. So I talked to our, and I've only been here for four months or so. And I got half the winter season and one spring season almost underway. But in our preseason meeting for the spring, we talk about, you know, creating a culture that's positive, being a positive role model, leading by example. And hopefully our students will imitate what our coaches are doing, saying, and all those positive things that we'd like to see out of our young adolescents. So leading by example, we want to continue to move in the right direction. And then, of course, we want to create a positive environment. That comes back to creating a culture of care that is motivating, that is supportive, that is a unified kind of approach within our whole department. So no matter what team or program you're with, we have this culture and expectation that, okay, what's it mean to be an Ontario Eagle? Well, this is what it means. So if we can do that and communicate that and get everybody on the same page, I really think we can continue to kind of elevate, you know, the athletics programs that currently exist. And really a big thing comes down to that mental, social health piece, of course, with a lot of physical benefits, but creating a sense of community and belonging. There's a good amount of our student body that are student athletes. So being a part of that group and that community, you know, it's like a family. And that's what we really want to strive to create. When you're going to practice together and you're sweating and you're working hard and you're committing and you're dedicated to not only yourself, but to your teammates, to the coach and to the program, I think that says a lot. So we want to continue to move in that right direction as we progress, you know, down the, down the line here. Now here's a quote I got that I really do enjoy reading. It's by Andrew Carnegie. He was a philanthropist and was a key player in the steel industry back in the early 1900s. So it simply says teamwork is the ability to work together toward a common vision. The ability to direct individual accomplishments towards organizational objectives or our athletic department objectives and goals. It is a fuel that allows common people to attain uncommon results. Okay, so that being said, while we do have an outstanding department, there's always room for growth naturally, like there is in every aspect of a business, organization, department or life really. So I was thinking, and only being new here about four months, what potential challenges are we facing, could we face? And then after I talk about this, I just kind of brainstormed some ideas to propose how we could kind of combat those challenges and kind of move the needle forward, you know, to show some growth. So potential challenges. It's no secret we're a smaller school district. So we do want to increase the numbers of our student athletes on our teams. Some teams don't have an ideal or sustainable number to safely support that team throughout the duration of a season, especially in a pandemic world. But going off of that, taking a step further, in an ideal world, we like to support, for example, all three levels, you know, of a softball program, a modified JV and VRC level, just for an example. And that could be applicable to any program out there. Because each one of those levels serves a purpose. Each one of those levels covers certain basic fundamentals, rehits on those fundamentals, skill development, strategic planning, X's and O's, you name it. And if one of those levels are missing, it's going to be an uphill battle to kind of compete and make progress. The progress that would be able to make is if you would have a third level in the program rather than a one or two. So those are, those are some potential challenges from what I've seen, just being here, you know, a short time. And this is kind of my last one. I just thought it was interesting. Just observed there wasn't a lot of, well, any gameplay at all over any type of breaks or anything like that. And not many practices either. And I think that comes of just taking a look at the culture, maybe the direction we want to go in and maybe just challenging coaches or student athletes just to think about that. Because these seasons go quick. The winter's the longest season, but with snow days and things like that, our game schedule and length can be impacted. The spring season, it's quick. You know, the first quarter, you could be inside with the snow, which is unfortunate. And then you got spring break. And if we don't play for break, you're going to lose three to four games off your total. And then also we get rain in April and or May. So if you're not at least examining the possibility of practicing or getting an extra competition in true for break, just know, coaches, teams, student athletes are losing a few opportunities to compete and kind of show some growth and progress. So that's just something I kind of looked at and something I like to get all the stakeholders involved, the coaches, and see maybe what we can kind of propose or consider and put maybe a one or two-year plan in place just to get everybody thinking about that. So those are just kind of three potential challenges that I saw, like I said, just from my short time here. Okay, challenges are great, but how are we going to make progress in the right direction and move forward? So I think if we continue to promote our sports programs, increase engagement, excitement, I think that will really get those student athletes on the fence. Wow, I want to try football. They had a pretty good year. Or man, the baseball team had a great win. That wrestling match was phenomenal. The gym was filled up. The energy was outstanding. I saw a lot of my teachers supporting the students. I want to be out there. So if we can get students excited about athletics and create this overall environment that if you're, you know, if you're thinking about doing it, but you're not sure you're on the fence, we want you to commit and try and we want you to be confident that your experience is going to be, you know, top of the line. And not to jump too far ahead, but I think this past week, at the high school level especially, was a huge, huge step in the right direction with promoting school spirit, community spirit, involvement. It was outstanding. I'll cover it at the end. But I just wanted to tie that into the possible solutions that we can do coming forward in the years to come. And like I kind of mentioned, just talking with the coaches and also other stakeholders, teachers, admins and parents as well, saying, hey, this is what we're thinking. You know, going on vacations are great if possible over the summer, but when fall sports start, August 22nd, 23rd, you know, it's in the best interest of the team, the student athlete, the program, what we're trying to do, our team vision, our athletic vision. If, you know, you would be there when the fall sports, you know, where to start. And that's not something, that's just one example that we're just going to hop up and implement, but it's just something to kind of think about. If we engage everybody and say, this is kind of the direction we want to consider if you want to elevate our chances of success, you know, and being really competitive, it's something maybe we should try to at least stimulate a further discussion. And expectations going off of that should be clearly defined. Where are we now? Where do we want to go? Here's a potential challenge. Here are some possible solutions to that challenge. Let's go. Let's hit the ground running. And just popping up at the top of my mind, we have an athletic council here that meets monthly and they've had a lot of great ideas to a couple of different topics. We have a newly formed booster club was really eager and hit the ground running. So I think we're just getting, it seems really more resources and support, not just athletics. The school community in general, the arts, music, kind of everything with this newly formed booster club. But I really think it's going to be beneficial if we can create these community partnerships, you know, with additional individuals who might be able to help kind of our game day experience and our athletic experience for our kids. I really think that will be vital and something that we really need to utilize and consider. Because I'm only one person. Our coaches are only 40 or 50 coaches. You know, we need to engage and use all of our resources. And that's how we make an organization and athletic department successful is if we empower those folks to have their voices be heard and really contribute to the conversation of how we can get on your Eagle athletic programs really kind of soar into new levels, if you will. Okay, so let's talk about student athlete development. The term student, I should have probably underlined that. Student athlete, I can't really say that enough. That is really key. That's what I believe. Perhaps it's a little bit of my bias, but if you're an athlete and a student athlete at that, I think you really need to consider, you know, extra, you know, the kind of spotlight you may be in, whether you want it or not in the community's eyes. You know, if you're at the field of softball game and the modified team is watching you, you should be in your best behavior. You should be respectful, responsible, ready to go. You should be polite. Hello, yes, you know, all those type of things. And I really think, you know, going in that direction, you know, would really be beneficial to our students. If we, and that comes, of course, our coach is kind of mimicking that and displaying that behavior, not just sometimes, but all the time. And I know I mentioned this before, but athletics teaches more than just how to win games or how to have a higher field goal percentage from the three-point line or foul shot or how to have more assists on the field hockey field. But it really teaches you lifelong skills that I really feel will be beneficial to that student once they graduate from Ontario High School. I mean, that's really, I think, what should be, you know, in our minds is how can we create an experience that we are confident that knowing when a student graduates from Ontario, well, elementary school, middle school and then high school, that we are giving them the tools to be successful. that we are giving them the tools to be successful and life ready? That we can feel confident in knowing, put me down as a reference because that young lady or that young man was phenomenal and you can really give that recommendation. So those are kind of really things that tie in in all of our stakeholders, coaches, athletes, parents, teachers, admin, everybody, community members, you name it. I think we could really kind of all work together on the development of our student athletes. And this last point I kind of want to hit on is, you know, I was kind of told that there wasn't always maybe, or folks didn't know about, how do we get to the next level? What is the NCAA clearinghouse? How do we upload transcripts? What are the difference between Juco, junior college, division three, two, and one? What's the timeline for that? How do we go about that? You know, is there financial aid? Is there scholarships? What do those look like? What are the due dates? So that's something I've been trying to work on. I know I've pushed out certain documents to parents who've requested it and also posted some things in the hallway. And I also want to do a better job on our social media outlets and sites and maybe some shout outs via email as well, just to kind of help educate and increase the knowledge. There are opportunities. Yes, we're a smaller school, but at the junior college level, division three level, and heck, even two and one, we do have student athletes that could possibly meet that criteria if they're aware of what's out there, the possibilities, and just kind of how it will go about that. So we want our kids to dream big, right? So if we present them with this information to parents, I really think we can kind of showcase the harder work that we're doing because we do have talent here. We do have a lot of, you know, student athletes that are exceptional and credible. So let's highlight them and let's give them a fighting chance to really go out and go after their dreams. Okay, so how can we get student athletes to be in the best position possible? Well, hopefully there's an effective and efficient leader at the helm, you know, via their coach. So what are we doing for our coaches? So BSN is a really big help and resource for us in terms of, you name, athletic equipment, facility, you know, items, and also resources for our coaches. Anytime I receive an email, maybe it's some, I actually got one today, some soccer webinar by, I think it was some division one or two college coach that was doing some free webinar. They push it out to me and I push it out to every coach in our soccer program. Boom, that's a free resource and webinar. And a lot of them are actually recorded, so at least if they register, they can get access to that to watch at a different time. But that's just one small example of just pushing our resources to our coaches so they can be the best version of themselves. We talked about that U versus U. So if they have that same mindset, that growth mindset, I think that'll really benefit our student athletes as well. And of course, we have our continuing education for our coaches. New York State Ed has a really non-negotiable coach certification protocol. And there's a temporary coaching license, which can kind of get rolled into a permanent coaching license once you successfully take and complete coaching courses one, two, and three. And that's something I've gotten feedback from coaches that, wow, they may have not had a huge coaching background, but after engaging and participating in these courses, they really saw things through a different lens, you know, from their philosophical approach and just kind of how they communicated with students, the different factors of what they considered. I talked about coach the other day, just scanning the field for any type of maybe safety risks or liabilities. I mean, myself, the grounds crew didn't see, just for example. All these little things that these courses can really challenge a coach to think about. It's just a broader spectrum, not just coaching, but our overall leader within that team and program. And then this last point here, the NFHS, it's the National Federation of High School Sports. They have lots of free resources right on their website, really for administrators, teachers, coaches, student athletes, parents, a lot of great tools that are really just out there. So I will do my very best to push those out to the coaches to make sure they have knowledge of that. And if they need any additional resources, you know, they can lean on me to help provide them with the resources so they can be successful and perform at an optimal level for their teams and their programs. So like we said, it's going to be a combined effort on all fronts to really create this all around amazing experience while our students are at Ontario and with the goal is to get them as successful as possible while they're here, but also to set them up for a lifetime of success, whether it's college, career, trade, you know, whatever it is. We want to be able to do that and give them the best chance possible. Okay, so in closing, you know, we are one Ontario. We need to be unified. We need to stand together. We need to be strong. We need to stand by each other, thicker than. We need to have each other's backs. And really just need to have this approach that, you know, if you're coming to play Ontario, you're going to know it. Our effort's going to be at 110%. We're going to be dedicated, hardworking. When you come here, it's going to be challenged. We're going to give it to you all we got. Our coaches will be positive role models. Our student athletes will be scholar citizens. So these are just kind of things. We create this culture that we can continue to make progress on and build off our previous foundation, you know, over the last couple of decades. And I really hit on, I think there's a lot of potential to deepen and strengthen our culture of success here. We have a lot of great coaches and staff members who are in it for the right reasons. So we want to continue to leverage them. We want to continue to increase the school spirit, enhance the student athlete experience. And that's how we can really continue to move the needle forward and just create an all around amazing experience for all different aspects of really their health, physical, social, and mental as well. So they can look back and say, wow, I had an incredible experience at OCS. And lastly, I'm excited to see where the future of the program's going to go. I'm going to continue to work as hard as I can with the council, with the booster club, with the coaches, student athletes, parents, community members, and just really try to elevate the programs here and do all I can to serve and make a difference and a positive impact. And, you know, hopefully just keep things going in the right direction and just present and assist in creating a program that everybody, you know, can be proud of. Okay, so this was cool. So we had a spring spirit week at the high school last week, which basically the council kind of selected some different themes for the different days. And we kind of created like a point system, the freshmen, sophomore, junior, seniors, different classes, and also staff members as well. And we announced at the end of every day, and it was phenomenal. It was exciting. There was cheering in the hallways. There was school spirit all around. And the feedback that we got, you know, it was just incredible. So we're hopefully hoping to do this, you know, every year. But this specifically was from our senior night. It was in the middle of our school, spring spirit event last Wednesday. These are, you know, our baseball seniors and softball seniors because it was our senior night. But we also had music. We had a concession stand. We had games set up. There were student athletes hanging out, throwing the football around, can jam, cornhole. The buzz around campus was awesome. We also had a middle school track meet down here. There was a lot of community members here, and that's something I thought was fabulous and phenomenal. So if you saw that and were a part of that, no matter who you were, I think you could say that, wow, there was school spirit that day or that week. So maybe students that were on the fence regarding athletics or wasn't, not really sure if it's for them or not, maybe they experienced that. And then maybe that's something we can continue to build off of in the fall, for example, like a homecoming week or something like that and get them more excited. And wow, you know what? Maybe I'll try out for girls' modified soccer. Last year I was a seventh grader, I'm an eighth grader now. I got one more year, it's my last chance. I want to get involved now. And boom, now you got somebody for the next four years of high school career as well. And hopefully, like athletics did to me, just make a really positive impact and difference on your life and teaching those lifelong skills that we spoke about. And for the record, this event and week long spirit week, it was a total unified and combined approach to booster club, the council, administrators, district staff, teachers, volunteer parents, students. Everybody had a hand in this and everybody played a vital role in pulling this off. It was really something cool to see. And for the first one, the first go of it, I thought it was exceptional. So now that we have longer time to plan and we can see where we could make improvements on, we'll be able to, you know, hopefully bring that to new heights next year as well. Okay, so let's move to our War of the Classes on Friday, which the seniors did win, by the way, so congratulations, shout out to the seniors. It was great. There was roughly 10 different activities. Each one had a rating system or a point rubric. And at the end, the classes were awarded different points and they competed in various different events. You don't want to know what was under those pies. There was water balloons. There was wiffle balls. There was potato soccer races, street soccer races. It was incredible and just the buzz was phenomenal. And each class made a banner and it was just an exciting day. I left here so fired up on a drive back home. It was incredible. And, you know, I'm looking forward to doing something like that again. And here, I believe I got one more, and this is a picture of all our students who stayed after on a Friday afternoon and participated in our War of the Classes Day. So I thought that was great. And for year one, what really just brainstorming, getting ideas, getting the last two months or so, I think it's a pretty good turnout. So if I had to bet, I would say next year it's going to grow. I'd say maybe a 50% increase is my goal at least. So I think that that's it. If anybody has any questions, I'd be happy to answer anything I can.
Thank you so much, Ryan. Does anybody have any questions? Trustee Sherry.
More than anything, I just wanted to thank you for the energy that you've brought to the athletic department. I think that Spirit Week was phenomenal. My son, who never stays after for anything, stayed after on Friday and had a great time. And I heard nothing but, you know, amazing things about the entire thing. I was wondering, for me, I always wonder about roadblocks and why children choose not to participate in something and why they choose to participate. So I wonder if there's been any consideration of surveying students and parents about why they do participate and why they don't participate in athletics? That's something I would be really interested in learning more about.
Yeah, and I don't see why we couldn't do that because if we can kind of identify the reasoning or rationale of why, then we could start turning the wheel and making progress. Maybe it was a negative experience in a youth sport. Maybe it was some feedback a coach gave them that made it rather than the wrong way. But you're right, if we could kind of pinpoint maybe why a student athlete would be hesitant or maybe reserve the trial for a sport, I think that could possibly help us with an action plan moving forward on how to increase our numbers, to support more of our programs, be more successful in the long run. So that's definitely something we can, I could bring to the council.
Yeah, I mean, it's so interesting because when you think about what student athletics brings to the table and how positive it is. And I had a student athlete at Ontario who was the captain of the field hockey team and really loved everything about playing sports. And then I have two sons who absolutely will not participate in sports. And, you know, I'd love to understand the difference between, it's not in parenting because they have the same parent, but there is something there. And I'd be really curious to understand more children and what prevents them from participating in something that could bring so much positive to their future, especially with your emphasis. And I think it's really important on having rural children in particular understand what the possibilities are for the future for them in playing sports, particularly at the smaller private schools who have more funding. Because there's a lot of scholarship money out there for student athletes, and it doesn't have to be division one. So I think that's great that you're focusing on that, and I'd love to support you in that.
Yeah, thanks for your feedback. And like I mentioned, I'd love to bring that to the council and see if we've done anything like that before. If yes, let's build off it. If not, let's see what we can put in the works and see what feedback we can get. So thank you.
Trustee Bishop.
Sure, not a question, just a comment. Thank you so much for your enthusiasm. And I'm really very happy to see that you've mentioned growth mindset in terms of really working with the coaches because that spills over to the students and it's just such a great policy. Thank you.
Thank you for your feedback. I appreciate it.
Trustee Osmond.
Yeah, thank you. And I think we all appreciate how much you've hit the ground running and your enthusiasm and dedication for the kids. And that's really great, and thank you for this presentation. You mentioned culture. I just wanted to ask you a question. A few years ago, before you were here, we had a group of senior girls show up and public be heard and express a sense of discomfort with some of the male staff feeling objectified by them. And in a perfect world, what would be your vision for this? And how could you, how do you think you could improve on that culture? Because we obviously have, you know, a mature female population participating in sports, and it's a very uncomfortable dynamic when that does happen.
Yeah, so in a perfect world, I would need to gather more feedback and information, involve more stakeholders, students, administrators, teachers, coaches, get everybody's feedback and see what has been maybe past practices, current practices, and the direction schoolwide. And sure, athletics, that would be the direction that we would want to go. But I think it would be a collaborative approach. And I wouldn't feel comfortable making a decision on my own. I'd like to get more stakeholder input just to kind of see, what's the scenario? Does it need to be looked at? If it does need to be looked at, how do we go about remedying, you know, the current issue at hand?
And it's a tough situation because whether it's real or not, there's always a student fear of retribution. So I guess my next question is, in your professional development for your staff, is this addressed? I know it is district wide, it's mandatory and that sort of thing, sexual harassment. But how can you help to prevent that from occurring within your staff in terms of just professional development?
Yeah, so, I mean, that's a tough one. I mean, it's apparent, it may have been here, you know, for however long it has been. I think it will involve furthering conversations with administrators, getting more background information. And then once we have that, talking to coaches about maybe presentation, how to go about something, how to bring up a topic and how to talk about it as, you know, mature individuals and see where the conflict or disagreement is and where, you know, how can we remedy or find a solution that would be equitable and make sense and contributes to a positive school environment for everybody involved.
Thanks, I appreciate your sensitivity.
You're welcome.
Anybody, trustee story?
I want to say thank you and echo that last week was student, the students were all excited with the Spirit Week. And I know one of the biggest hits was anything, one of the days was anything besides a backpack. And I happened to be here because we were doing, helping out with the barbecue and they had pack and plays and there were shopping carts. There were the big kid shop, you know, little kid shopping carts and real ones. It was quite enjoyable to see what the kids came in with. And I think, like you said, it's something that we can just continue to grow on. And I know my son came home because he did War of the Grades and his clothes went straight into the washing machine for the pie eating contest. It was like maple syrup and whipped cream.
Yeah, that sounds accurate. And also, anything about a backpack, I also saw, I don't know, it was a rather large baby crib on wheels that somebody was kind of rolling across the parking lot.
Yeah, a pack and play. That's what the pack and plays that we used to have as, you know, when my 21-year-old was younger, that's what we used.
Now, I don't want the athletics world to take credit for that, but we could argue that student athletes and school spirit helps sparks student creativity as well, perhaps. Oh, and if I just couldn't, just my last comments, there's no other questions. I don't want to give it away completely, but I do know in working with some other administrators and folks in the district, we are, I can say we're looking to enhance the athletic game day experience next school year. Couple of things still in the works, but we are looking to do that for our students, coaches, and community. So that's in the works, something we're going to try to make progress on.
Thank you, and I hate to break it to you, but there are more questions. I just heard the superintendent say, uh-oh. First of all, thank you so much. I really appreciate your vision of unity across all sort of levels and departments. And especially to piggyback on trustee Osmond's comments. First of all, gender equity in athletics and PE is on our transition priorities list for the new superintendent. So that is something that I'm sure will be discussed going forward. But regarding that sort of unified vision of a culture, do you, how often do you bring all your coaches together? And do the, you know, does the girls' field hockey coach sit in the same meeting as, you know, the boys' football coach? And how often do you do that?
Yeah, so I came here midway through the winter and really was just... Yeah, so I came here midway through the winter and really was just forced to get out there, meet as many people as I can and kind of hit the ground running. But then in the spring, I held a preseason coaches meeting, which all coaches, programs, levels, you know, needed to attend. And if they cannot attend to a previous commitment or something, it was recorded, sent to them so they had access to all the material and then we went over it. But so I do meet with all coaches and I'll do that beginning of the fall season, for the fall, the winter season and spring season. And then I have constant check-ins with them throughout that season of how things are going, you know, what do I need to know, any, you know, problems arise and things like that. And then at the end of the season, which I did start in the winter, we have like a checkout or exit meeting where at that time they can give me feedback and anything further they encountered, looking at for next year, you know, how do we improve and get better, things like that. So I guess to answer your question, it'll be a preseason meeting and address with all the coaches together. Throughout the season, it'll be constant check-ins and how are we doing on athletics front? How are things going? And that could also, you know, of course be increased as needed to reinforce what we're trying to do. And then at the conclusion of each season, I'll meet with every modified JV varsity coach for an exit meeting, for equipment requests, evaluation from me, how we can improve and get better, things like that.
Great, thank you very much. And I know it wasn't the focus of your presentation tonight, but I'll look forward to hearing from you and assistant superintendent laughing about the opportunities there are in health and PE curriculum too. So thank you very much and it's taken us a while to get you here, but welcome to Antioa officially and we're very proud to have you.
Thank you, everybody. I'm happy to be here.
Okay, great. Speaking of assistant superintendent laughing, you're going to present the technology plan.
Good evening, everyone. I'm gonna try to let the microphone do its job by itself here. Before I begin, I just want to reiterate the welcoming statements to our athletic director, Mr. Nakarado. I have the pleasure of being his direct supervisor and that is certainly a new experience for me. But it is a real opportunity to get to know the district and our students and our community on a different level that perhaps if I was not able to interact with him so regularly, I wouldn't be able to do. So in, in those meetings, when I first met with Ryan, I asked him, I said, other than getting and continuing our athletic program, there are two things that I charge you to do, your overall goals. And the first thing was to build relationships. And the second was to bring the joy. And I think there is certainly evidence that he has worked very heartily on both and done a great job. So I just wanted to recognize that work. Thank you for that, Ryan. Great job. Okay, so the technology plan. This is a plan that the district submits to SED for approval. And as you see, we are up for our new submission. And that plan will cover the 2022-2025 year range. Our technology team members are listed and we had a broad range of members on our team. As you can see, we, we had members from multiple buildings, administrators, teachers, our library media specialists play a very important role in this as well. And I worked in close partnership with our director of technology, John Reimer. So I want to thank John for all his support and partnership as we put this plan together. He played a key role as we looked at what the previous plan stated and where we wanted to move forward. So you can see our timeline for the work that we did. Really, John and I got started in the fall at a workshop at Ulster Bowses with other districts around the county, talking about the new requirements, talking about the new format and what it would take really to get together in our district groups. It's nice to be able to have that, working with colleagues and listening to what other groups are doing across the county. And John and I were able to participate in that group together. Just setting up a plan for where do we start and how do we move forward? So we spent really December and January collecting data, writing a partial draft, just basically looking at the format of the new form. In February through April, our tech plan committee met to provide feedback on our drafts, create a stakeholder survey, review the survey and identify goals and finally come up with our draft as we have it. Our stakeholder survey went out in March to capture student, family and staff voices. We were able to get feedback in April from the Mid-Hudson RIC on our draft plan. That's part of the process, as you could say, moving up the food chain to state ed. They gave us some feedback on our plan. And here we are in May and presenting to the board of ed and with plans to submit to NICE Ed in the portal in the few weeks. So our process as a team, the first thing we did was spend some time reflecting on the 2018-2021 plan. Really looking at some key questions on what was achieved, what had changed. You know, it's interesting, technology in every form, including instructional technology, changes so quickly. And when this plan was written in 2018, we hadn't been through COVID yet. Instruction, you know, the "this is not a drill" piece of your instructional technology plan, it had to be very quickly implemented. What was there? What did we have? All the things that were, well, it might be nice or what if we, all of a sudden, had to be done. So it was very interesting to look at that range of planning and ideas and experiences that were evident in that plan. So reflecting upon the following items, what aspects of technology were working well for instruction? What do we need to do better to support student learning? What do we need to do, what do we need to do, sorry, what aspects of technology were unfulfilled or not working well? In other words, were there things in that 18, 19, 21 plan that we had yet achieved, were outdated or that we had found really didn't make sense? What do we need to do to help students utilize technology in a way that gets us closer to our district mission and vision? And how can we incorporate the professional learning plan, which we looked at at the beginning of the school year, as well as our ISTI standards and the computer science and digital fluency standards? How can we incorporate those into the plan? And we had a lot of discussion. I think it's important that we make sure we don't have these free standing district plans that don't interrelate, that have goals that are separate. And it's really important to kind of synthesize and look where we're supporting those goals in multiple plans. We had our instructional technology survey. We reviewed the data, we identified our funding sources and finalized our plan. So the next slide represents the instructional technology survey that we sent out. It was out and open for input, March 3rd to March 11th. Sections for students, for parents and family members and for faculty and staff. And you can see our responses, our response percentages to that plan. And when that data came back, it allowed us as our team to look together and notice the responses and think about what that meant for us moving forward. So the, NICE Ed has developed five technology goals. And it requires that the district's goals that they choose be aligned to those goals. So when you look within, you know, this, these were kind of our, not really parameters, but it gave the, it gave the committee a sense of what we were headed towards. And it was important for us to, you know, not necessarily identify every one of these goals. Sometimes when you have too many goals, as you know, if everything's important, nothing's important. So within that timeline and experiences of where we've been, within the next three years, where do we really want to focus? So our first district goal was to utilize district technology to strengthen the implementation of the NICE Ed culturally responsive sustaining framework, which asks the district to create student-centered learning environments that inform, that inform AFIRM racial, linguistic and cultural identities. Prepare students for rigor and independent learning. Develop students' abilities to connect across lines of difference. Elevate historically marginalized voices and empower students as agents of positive change. So the goal that that aligns with, you'll notice, we've identified the state goal, the NICE Ed goal, is to provide technology-enhanced culturally and linguistically responsive learning environments to support improved teaching and learning. So at first, I believe even got a comment from the RIC on this, who is not really in necessarily instructional technology, they're more than nuts and bolts. Well, how does, how does this align? How would, how would you do that? But it's the concept of language and barriers and limitations and inclusivity and really looking deeply at all our practices and policies and thinking about how we can support access to expression, access to information, access to showing what you know to all of our students. So that is a very big umbrella and it's important to think of it in that way. So there are some action steps that we identified to moving towards this goal. Continued professional learning around the CRS framework. Also continued professional learning and collaboration with our technology integration specialists who we have through Ulster Bowses, professionals that come in and work with our teachers and staff weekly in our buildings. Also, how we might utilize federal and state grants as well as the district budget to support these opportunities and the goal. And then collaboration and planning with building staff and district staff. Our second goal matched exactly with one of the NICE Ed goals and that's increasing equitable access to high-quality digital resources and standards-based, technology-rich learning experiences. One of our questions on our survey dealt with the concept of being a 21st century learner. And that's something that we, we discussed in our team, wondering how well are we preparing and asking how well are we preparing our students to be 21st century learners? And again, technology and it seems, you know, the needs of the work environment, there are many things that constantly revolve. But how are we doing on these skills as they're identified? And how are we, what level of focus have we had instructional on this? So again, our action steps are listed, professional learning opportunities during the school day, but also after school and in the summer for staff. Working collaboratively with our integration specialists from Bowses. Collaborate to align the purchases of devices and software to our goal. In other words, do we have the things and the data? Do we have the hardware? Do we have the software? Do we have the platforms that are current, that are being used and that are aligned with our goals? One of the things I really appreciate partnering with John on is looking at how frequently our software and our platforms are being utilized by our staff. If we're buying something, if we're paying for it, is it being utilized? And is it the best fit for our goal? So that's something I really appreciate his partnership and it's allowed us to be reflective on that. And that falls into reviewing those metrics for instructional software. And then our final district goal, number three in the plan, is to support our district's professional learning plan by providing access to relevant and rigorous professional development to ensure educators and leaders are proficient in the integration of learning technologies. And that again aligns with our NICE Ed goal. Our action steps are very similar. Providing those learning opportunities, continuing to collaborate with our integration specialists. When it comes to curriculum revision, writing, thinking about how technology, how instructional technology plays a role in identifying that clearly and reflecting upon that and collaborating on that. What am I using? Why am I using it? I think the intentionality piece and reflecting on intentionality plays a really big role in this plan and how that plays out, touching students, touching teachers, teacher choice on what and why. And then reviewing our data that my learning plan allows us to review. And looking at what professional learning opportunities are being taken advantage of and how we can make sure we're providing plenty of, of choice and opportunity for our staff in, during all different times, during school, after school and during the summer. So our next steps as we submit this, really moving forward, is to think systematically about the district, integration of district goals and plans, which I mentioned to you. I think it's really important that we keep thinking about the interconnectedness of these plans so they don't exist in isolation or they, they don't work in opposition. And then also for our technology committee to meet regularly, think, looking at our action steps, looking at who's responsible. Have they taken, has everyone moved forward as, in their own accountability towards making sure we've implemented this? Assess our implementation, our desired outcomes and make any changes as needed. So that is the technology plan as written. Are there any questions, concerns?
Thank you for that and thank you for the multiple times you highlighted collaboration. I appreciate that. Are there any questions for the assistant superintendent? No? Wow, you got off easy tonight. Thank you very much. Agenda item 4.01, the superintendent recommends acceptance of donations totaling $8,212.50 cash from various donors and as scholarship awards for the graduate, for the graduating class of 2022. The superintendent recommends approval of the following donations. $400, West Hurley Fire Department. $300, Deborah and Richard Hepner. $100, Construction Materials Marketing, Inc. $50, Sharon McKnight. $250, Wadele Brothers, Inc. $200, Ward and Jane Todd. $3,000, Fidelity Charitable Quandra Family. $31.25 Gabriel Bono. $31.25 Liz Fallow. $31.25 Amanda Allison. $31.25 Carol Greima. $31.25 from Dieter Schimmelfenig. $31.25 from Kyle Harchus. Christine Downs. Jennifer O'Connor. Linda Sella. Stephanie Laffin. Ryan Nakarado. Lance Edelman. And John Reimer each. Thank you. And there's a reason why it's $31.25. I can't remember, but. Oh, and I thought yours was gonna be bigger. That's why I just, I. $31.25 from, from Mary, from Mary Stephanie Corson. That's embarrassing. $200 from the Olive Senior Citizens. $500 from Robin and Audrey Hunter. $100 from Amanda Van Buren. $100 from Bridget Allison. $600 from Care for OCS. $1,000, Imagine Antioa. $425, Margaret Haug. $300, Decca. $50, Mary Anne Adler. $200, Scott Villa. May I have a first? Trustee Sherry, second trustee Story. Thank you all. And superintendent Corson, you give so much, not in cash too. All those in favor? That's unanimous. Thank you. The Board of Education hereby approves the increase for substitute food service workers from the reorganizational meeting from $14 an hour to $15 an hour. May I have a first trustee Story? Second trustee Bishop? Other questions or comments? All those in favor? That's unanimous. 4.03, the review of the code of conduct. So I'm gonna pull it up on my, my phone here because I didn't. Does anybody have any, I'm sorry. Does anybody have any questions or comments or start the discussion? the discussion? Trustee Story, when was this Code of Conduct written?
Prior to me being on the board.
Right, I think it was, we were both...
We were both, can I ask you this question? Because you were on the committee with me. When did we...
It was finished a minimum of seven years ago. So the process must have started in 2014, right? Or spring of 2015 at the earliest. So, I'm sorry, go ahead.
I was just going to say, one of the things, and I don't, I think actually, I don't want to steal trustee Story's thunder about the safety committee, but one of the things we discussed was that the Code of Conduct definitely needs to be reviewed and revised. It needs to be reviewed through the lens of social media, it needs to be reviewed through the lens of restorative justice. However, as you're all aware, there's a prescribed process with prescribed stakeholders that will take place over time. And I know that's something that, not to speak on behalf of Assistant Superintendent Laffin, but that Assistant Superintendent Laffin will be working with our administrators on, and it's something that we see being a priority for this coming year.
Great, agreed. So I'm trying to remember how long we worked on this. Five, oh, I'm sorry.
No, it was, it was worked on, published, it was reviewed in 2019. That's what it says on the front cover. That's the last time it was changed.
Yeah, that was the last time it was changed. It was reviewed, but we just really, there were addenda to the 2015 document.
Right.
And I think it was the fall of 2015 that it was brought.
Okay.
And we probably worked through the spring.
Right, and I put it, it was on the agenda really more as a reminder that you wanted to review it and may and adopt it at reorg.
Okay, great. So that's, so I would say that the review job will be lengthy considering the changes, the just, the differences in sort of media and everything since 2019 or 18. So I think that stakeholder group would need to be impaneled, but I also want to add that there, I think in sort of reviewing the Code of Conduct, I think there are two parts to the Code of Conduct. One is what is written, that is by the stakeholders and how that review goes. The other is the implementation of it, and I think we always want to make sure that we're sort of holding our Code of Conduct. My experience has been, over the years, that sometimes our rules are better than our implementation of them, or our ability to sort of hold them as standards. And sometimes that means the standard is wrong, and sometimes that means there hasn't been proper, we haven't properly informed people about what the Code of Conduct might say. So that is what I would have to say, and if it, if the process were to extend beyond June, then I would be able to name one volunteer who might be willing to be a stakeholder in this review. Are there any other questions or comments about this? Yes, trustee bishop.
I think that the deeper conversation about really reviewing the Code of Conduct and really having a look at it before we kind of give it our stamp of approval at the reorg meeting came up in policy. And, you know, in reviewing some of the policies, especially that huge batch of policies that we approved whenever that was, a couple of weeks ago or a month ago, you know, the Code of Conduct came up a number of times in our discussion. And Superintendent Corson's reminded us, because she had been speaking with the attorneys, that, you know, we really do need to take a closer look at the Code of Conduct prior to approving it each year. So my suggestion would be that we really do try to take a close look at it and maybe discuss it again at the next meeting.
Trustee Osmond.
Yeah, thank you, trustee bishop. One of the other things we discussed, too, is that it does seem in reading through the current Code of Conduct that a lot of the onus is on student conduct. And there seems to be, at least in my opinion, a need for more equity as to just personnel Code of Conduct, whether they be staff, students, visitors, whatever, and that it be aimed more at all people in the buildings rather than just aimed at students, because there are things that, just in reading through it, that are very specific towards students, and some of those need to be, but they also apply to staff as well, and I think that that should be highlighted.
I agree wholeheartedly. There should be a universality to our standards for our conduct. So then our next step would be that, oh, did you have your hand up? I'm sorry. Our next step would be that we'll review before the next meeting, and then we will sort of, based on our appraisal of it, then Assistant Superintendent Laffin will be in charge of impaneling whatever group needs to be impaneled to do the work. Trustee Sherry.
I just wanted to remind everyone that the last discussion we had about this included students as part of the panel, and I just really want to make sure that that happens. I think that students, and not just members of the student government, but students from all areas of the district be included in this discussion. I really want their feedback on what this should look like, especially when it comes to social media, because there are just things we do not understand and are not going to understand.
Yes, thank you for that. In fact, in 2014, trustee Story was still a student. Anything else on the Code of Conduct? 4.04, review the NISBA resolution kit. So as you know, every year we are invited to propose resolutions for NISBA's sort of lobbying agenda, and we have proposed some in the past. Some of you will not be surprised to find out that I'm bringing back the one that failed twice because it did better last year than the year before, but trustee story? No?
No, but I was, I'm going to say something that the motion for to continue our SRO passed 19 of four tonight.
Fantastic. Thank you to the Ulster County Legislature.
We'll be able to keep our SRO next year.
Thank you very much for that. Thank you, and I'm so proud that our students got on board and petitioned.
274 signatures, and they got it in two days. They did a great job.
And Superintendent Corson's, thank you for your efforts, and the Board of Education also petitioned. So I'm very happy about that. So does anybody have any questions about the NISBA resolutions? So I will email you all, but mine remain unchanged except for the figures for the CPI and the cost of increase for health insurance. Two years ago, I think we proposed three resolutions, all regarding healthcare for students and for universal healthcare and single-payer healthcare. Our $60 million budget includes, what is it, $18 million in healthcare costs in a country that has Medicare. I can't even, we could give back all of our state aid and still have millions of dollars left over if we weren't paying for health insurance. And I believe it's a right, but I believe that it gets passed over every time on the federal level, that its impact on education, it is a third of our $60 million budget, basically. And I think that is just an unnecessary thing. So I will email you all the same resolutions. I'll change the numbers, but I have them in front. If you would like me to read them, they're all very short, but we don't have, okay. And then I'm going to ask trustee Osmond, because you have proposed the same resolution, also two years in a row, which also got more discussion this past year. So the three healthcare resolutions, the first is, resolved that the New York State School Boards Association support the proposed New York Health Act and any legislation at the state or federal level that provides single-payer healthcare for all New Yorkers. The second says, resolved that the New York State School Board Association support legislation that requires every child in New York State aged 0 to 21 be covered for free under the Child Health Plus program. And the third says, resolved that the New York State School Boards Association supports legislation which requires the state of New York to hold school districts harmless for employee and retiree healthcare increases that exceed the Consumer Price Index, which will not happen this year because the CPI is 7.5% and the cost of health insurance increase is 4.7%. They just seem like common sense to me. I don't know what to say. I feel like a broken record, but there it is. I'll send them around and we can, you know, if there are other resolutions that anyone wants to propose, we can discuss them, and if we have consensus, we can, we can give them to, we can submit them for their review. Trustee Osmond.
Yeah, I'll just raise the issue that I've raised previous years, whether it's popular or not, I do feel that it's worth considering, is that there be some mechanism for tenure to be renewed periodically, whether it be five years, 10 years, what have you, that, you know, in recognition that the majority of our staff is excellent and very devoted, there are always situations in school districts where some review would be warranted, and there have been issues in the past where someone who is probably past the point where they are effective in their career cannot be removed because of tenure. And to safeguard against that, I think it would be healthy to have a periodic review and renewal of tenure. So, popular or not, I would want to put that forth.
Great, thank you. And it took me so long to find my notes on this because, of course, I can't find anything in my email, but I will find yours and send it along, the previous one as well, okay? Yes. Trustee Amster.
Since you're going to have new board members tonight, and the resolutions are not due until August 1st, I might suggest that you discuss this at your reorg meeting in July with your new board members and make sure they don't have anything.
That's a great idea. Thank you. Thank you for that.
Perhaps it could even be supplied in their orientation materials.
Fantastic. Anything else regarding the NISBA resolutions? All right. The Board of Education hereby approves all the independent contract retainers in items 5.02 to 5.04. Can I have a first? Trustee Bishop, second trustee Osmond, are there questions or comments? All those in favor? Aye. All right, that is unanimous. The Board of Education hereby approves consent agenda items numbers 6.02 to 6.09. May I have a first? Trustee Sherry, second trustee bishop, are there questions or comments? Is our reader not here?
She's not here. Did she text?
I have not heard from her, and I'm going to text her very quickly right now. I hate to do this, but... Can we do that?
Can you do that?
All right, so we have...
I read Schedule U and see it's in order.
Great, thank you. Thank you both. Are there any other questions or comments? All those in favor? Aye, that is unanimous. And we are going to take a break until the votes come in. Sorry, say it again? Oh, I'm sorry. I didn't...
Should I say it's a now or do I mount right before we come back?
Oh, what?
I just want to share some things, and I didn't know if it was now or when we come back.
Please, by all means, now is a great time.
Okay. So first of all, it's my understanding that tonight is trustee's Osmond's last board meeting. Trustee Osmond has been on the Ontario Board since the 2007-2008 school year. She's been a clear advocate for children, from making certain that what they eat and drink is healthy, to promoting the use of alternative foods, fuels, to save the environment for a children's future. Lori's been a supporter of recess for all students, understanding the need to balance homework with critical quality time for students for play, as well as quality time with their family. And over the years, she's brought many experts to work with the board in retreats. Lori was board president for seven years. Her leadership and knowledgeable contributions to the board as a whole, as well as to the board's policy committee, have created the foundation to support this district's vision and mission. In closing, I just want to say, Lori, for me, it's been a pleasure working with you. I've greatly appreciated your respectful professionalism. The Ontario School District was so lucky to have you as a trustee for all these years, and your commitment and dedication will greatly be missed. Thank you.
Well, thank you for that. That's very kind, and I may be missed, and it may be a relief sometimes not to have me around, but I won't be a stranger. Not only am I the parent of an alum, I am going to become the stepparent of a sixth grader, so you will be seeing me.
Great, thank you. And then just one more thing. Finally, as you all know, tonight will be my last officially scheduled board meeting with the district. From October 2015 to June of 2018, and more recently from May of 2021, I've had the privilege of working here at Ontario First as an Assistant Superintendent for Curriculum Instruction, and now as the interim superintendent. As you all know, Ontario has a really special place in my heart. Throughout my time in the district, I've worked diligently to move the district forward to enhance education for our students, because as we all know, our children are our most cherished and valued assets. While not everyone will agree with all of my decisions, please know that all my decisions were always made based on what I believed is in the best interest of the children of our district. I've also had the opportunity to work collaboratively alongside some wonderful colleagues whose insight and knowledge were greatly appreciated and regarded, and I've greatly enjoyed working for the district and have appreciated the support that many have provided me with during my time here. In closing, I want to wish the district, staff, students, and community the best of luck in the years ahead, and thank you for this opportunity.
Well, thank you. I was going to wait till the end of the meeting. We have three people on the dais who, this will be their last time, you will see them here for a while, in, at least in the capacity they're in. So trustee Osmond, we spoke to your awesomeness at our last meeting. Superintendent Corson's, you have stepped into, I can't really call it what I'm supposed to call it with the camera on, but you stepped into a difficult situation, and you are the consummate education professional. You, your integrity is never in question. You know, agree or disagree, there is never a question about your intention to help children. You're also brilliant. We have had regular discussions outside of our time here, and you have taught a lot of us a lot, but you've taught me an awful lot about education that I will continue to think about. So I cannot thank you enough for stepping into this role. I know you weren't expecting it when it happened, but you couldn't tell that from the way you just jumped right in. So your energy is almost embarrassing to me, to be honest, how much energy you have. So thank you for that. And Fern, thank you. You have been like our, if we were the Cub Scouts, you've been our den mother for, for so many years. Like, I actually thought today, and I'm not kidding, so it's been seven years, I'm not sure I can remember five meetings without you here. I think I can, I literally can only remember one meeting without you here. Thank you for that. You are... You are, I'm not going to call you steady because you have so many like sort of weird spikes of knowledge. You know the history and you, like you're just are, I always call you the most overqualified district clerk in history. Thank you so much for being a resource. We've also had a lot of incredible discussions, incredible perspective that you give to us and you are going to be missed and you are appreciated. Thank you. We already do. I just want to see, I want, have you both been taking minutes tonight? Okay. I, I wanted to see, I thought you were both taking them. I was like, I got to see the difference. I have to see. Well...
There's, every district clerk brings their own perspective and it's the district clerk's minute, so she did the minutes last time. I read them. I didn't change them because that's her perspective.
Oh, fantastic.
Yeah, that's her perspective. She has a right to do her own thing as district clerk. She doesn't have to do my thing.
Well, thank all three of you. You are, you know, I, I wish I, you know, could speak or could, you know, amplify the voices of our students, the thousands that have passed through here on your watch, but man, it's something else. Thank you.
All right, the votes are in on the issue of Proposition One. The Board of Education hereby certifies the votes cast for Proposition One, the 2022-23 budget of $59,991,639. Yes? Amanda?
$592.
And no?
$170.
May I have a first? Trustee Bishop, second trustee Sherry. The ballot... Are there any questions? No? All those in favor? Aye, the ballot has passed, or the budget has passed. On the issue of Proposition Two, the Board of Education hereby certifies the votes cast for Proposition Two. The Capital Reserve, yes?
$646.
No?
$112.
May I have a first? Trustee Bishop, second trustee Osman. Are there any questions or comments? All those in favor? Aye, that proposition carries as well. Thank you to our community for passing our budget and approving our proposition. The Board hereby certifies the votes cast for the three board seats, three vacancies, two three-year terms effective July 1st, 2022 to June 30th, 2025, and one one-year, six-week term for the unexpired seat of trustee Bennett Radcliffe. In the declaration of votes cast, Leon Savage?
$349.
Kristi Taylor?
$345.
Sarah Hemingway Lynch?
$583.
Megan Romondo?
$527.
May I have a first? Trustee Bishop, and second trustee Sherry. And we will not be seating Leon Savage tonight because the race for third place was so close. Our district clerk will review the affidavit ballots and confirm on Thursday. Any other questions or comments? All those in favor? Aye. Motion carries. Congratulations to our new trustees. We are very much looking forward to working with you, and you will find this job very rewarding. May I have a first to adjourn? Trustee Bishop?
I suggest it be trustee Osman as it's her last board meeting.
Yeah, I couldn't get my hand up fast enough. Because usually trustee Story is quick on the draw. I'll be first to adjourn.
Trustee Osman, second. Any seconds? Is there a second? Anybody else? Anybody else?
Right here, Cav!
Absolutely not. Trustee Story, all those in favor? All right, thank you. Lori, good luck.
Thank you. Thanks, everybody. It's been a trip.